At this time, we're gonna go break into the city of Douglas, Maryland. Good evening.
Where y'all sitting here? After all, we here. You over everything, you the boss, but you don't want us to be heard? It's ambush. It's ambush.
So you want to speak, right?
I had to speak. I have to speak because they have to have support. They ain't got no support. If black males don't come out and support these ladies, man, they gonna see how he do. That's what he'll do. He'll cut it off. Just cut it off.
Commissioner, what, what, I know you got to go back in the meeting. Michelle, do you think that was right? I mean, how do you feel about it?
Of course not, Mr. Ryan. This been wrong for a long time. This Maryland, we got, I banned these people in Douglas, Georgia to not support him. When they saw how he did Roscoe Allen about his $40,000, when they saw how he did Brandon Hall with his job, and now just three weeks ago, this black woman, Joanne Robertson, they just railroaded and got her out of her job for 17 and a half years. They do what they want to do to black folk. One exception, Britt Leverett, they did him wrong. He had reported on a white guy who had a Ku Klux Klan hood. Next thing we know, Britt done got rid of him. This man upholds this stuff. It's time out for it. It's time out. The people better know what's going on and come together, and I'm telling you, better find out somebody to run from there. Because we started going back. We are started going back. He sure do.
He done sat there and told the bigger last girl on that man, him and that white dude. Both of them need to be locked up. There's a bunch of bull jive in Douglas, Georgia. Douglas, Georgia need to stop. Out of 49 years, I ain't never seen nothing like this yet. If the man could sit up and lie like that, I could go take out a warrant and say Robert said he was gonna kick my ass.
That's right. And they oughta own it. They oughta own that.
Was you a witness to that?
I was up. I heard it on the, I heard it on the phone. Only thing, Rob, only thing that man said was on that pizza bag.
Don't wanna talk to the crap Roscoe say, I'm gonna F you up and I'm gonna whip your ass. I don't know who they heard say that. He made one statement. It's time. It's time. It's time. It's time, young people. It's time.
The biggest part about it is, hold up, hold up, y'all know why I did it in the block. Because we ain't got the money that them white folks giving this nigga.
It's the same.
That what it is. This nigga getting paid dog inside. That what he doing. Only thing that nigga doing is sending it to them and sending them white folks laugh. Being a Benedict, a Uncle Tom, everything it is to be. That what that nigga do. He ain't shit.
Your all hearts and my answer to you, y'all be big with it, okay? So with the number of individuals that are speaking, if you're going to be talking about the same thing, if you want to get a representative, I will allow that representative more time. So if it's gonna be individual issue, then I'll do everything I can to let everybody speak, okay? Good deal. All hearts rise clear.
So actually, I got a question before we start.
Yes, ma'am.
In the past, some of you have had discussions in the past that you would stop dealing with, okay?
Well, what we get started is that what we were trying to do is stay with what Char said that seven. And if you recall, we hadn't been going over in the last year and a half or so.
Yeah, we've been with that.
Yeah, we've been with that in the future. In the past, I agree with that, but not in the last 18 months. All right, we have six o'clock. Last, everybody make sure that the phones on silent, the fire break. Good evening. Welcome to the city of Douglas, Maryland Commission. This was served as our work session for July 27, 2020. And always, turn it over to our city manager to lead us through it. Mr. City Manager.
Good afternoon, very good afternoon. First item, I wanted to make four review of July 13, 2020 events. Commissioner Dern. Mr. Moore. Mayor Proctor. Mr. Tate.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Pearson. Next, Mr. City Manager. Next, the item two, found on page 13, discuss the approval to reaffirm this member to the Douglas conference. And then make a card for George Henderson. Good evening.
2024 is not a great time. This is the year of Nebraska to a four-year term to the Senate's 10 land act. Called from August 23, 2020, to August 27, 2024.
Commissioner Tate. Ms. Pearson. Mayor Proctor. Mr. Moore. Next, the item three, found on page 14, discuss the approval of bylaws for the keep of Douglas beautiful. Chapter and everybody for board members.
Okay, we keep the agenda going with keep. That is due to the chapter we're at the point now where we need to also approve the bylaws that we have before you. And also introduction of this agenda has to allow us to our department publicize to so we can build the board and direct the troops on.
Mr. Tate. Commissioner Pearson.
I'm sorry I'm bad, however, I want to make sure that moving forward. And we go ahead and sign the vote on the Douglas Judiciary Council, whatever we're gonna call it. If we go ahead, no, 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 this is the beautiful I know. But I'm saying, we have pending right now the utility committee, and we changed it to the citizens and the Judiciary Council. So what I'm, I'm just making a reference that we get some bylaws in place for that as well. I don't know whose apartment that's gonna be. I know you're bringing this, you know, your department. So whose apartment that fall under for the, uh, this, how, I'm just letting you know, I don't know. Okay, whose apartment would fall under? Is anybody here with this apartment that's fall under?
Community relations.
Community Utility Council, I think you said.
That's the Maryland Council and City Manager's office.
Okay, that's gonna fall under us. So we're gonna need to develop some bylaws, probably to find and adopt that committee. Just mentioning, since we are on that line of topic, but we have a cluster bylaws for that community. And we need to do something.
So you will consent?
I both consent. And Mr. City Manager, you were also supposed to finalize that committee. And I see it's not on this agenda to be finalized.
Is that we brought it the last time, and then we brought back again at a future date once. Fair had time to get a form and two later, and all that's gonna be right next, or if you hang out at night, then it'll be the next.
I can bring up under, after general comments if we have.
Okay, okay.
We're good. Mr. Moore. Mr. Galvin. Mr. Dern.
All right, next item, the item four, found on page 23, discuss the request of Just Jesus group to host the event at the Douglas Airport, George Henderson.
Thank you. Assistant Anderson, you have a request from Mr. Travis Adams, who represents the Just Jesus organization, a group of young Christians. And their request is to use the property at the Douglas Airways and the historic side and other side for a high care run again on Saturday, October 10th, from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. They actually asked to allow instead of the break down time of the actual event, he said that you can like 8:00 to 12:00. But they understand the rules that's in the agenda in order for them to handle what we're needing to do. That Jenna Howard, the keeper, read it all, also spell out what the city of Douglas, uh, reliable for not liable for. Means they include it, uh, the roadmap for the month as well. So it's for your pool of the amount of this request. And I will say that I did have this before the airways preservation committee, as well as the airport commission. They're all ten visits as long as they need to be, and they're liable of their mission terms, that's the other thing. The only request in here for the city of Memphis is to use some trash cans, and I put that in Jenna's package as well. And I believe they have a representative this year, yes.
So basically, Just Jesus, like Just Jesus, Commissioner Tate.
I say. I represent since the United Four.
Yes, Four. Commissioner Pearson.
I'm trying to consent.
Mayor Proctor.
Yes, I'm consenting.
And Mr. Moore, Mr. Galvin, Mr. Dern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, the item five, found on page 27, discuss the process for registering soft cards, white dollars. Good evening. Now that's from four, y'all, discuss the registration process of soft cards, and then the procedure going on. When you come in and apply for registration with soft cards, we're giving an application, we're also giving a brochure, telling you what's required. Some requirements, when you have children, it can be operating a soft card or riding on a soft card. It can be required to have safety insurance, but people that's on soft card. You're gonna be required to have a glass in the lot, because on top of the soft card, you'll be seeing from 360 degrees around the drop court. You're required to have a horn that's off for 200 feet. If you operate at night, you want to have headlights, taillights, brake lights, and furnaces, and proper exhaust. The big thing against confusion is the insurance requirement. You're required to have the same amount of insurance that you are operating motor vehicles on the streets. The minimum requirement is like $25,000 per injury, $50,000 per incident, and $25,000 for property. This can be included on your home policy, because you got to have a limit, minimum legal limits that you take required in your vehicles. And there's three ways to get that, it's on the home insurance, or the recreational vehicle insurance, or you can get just like new on the car, some insurance, some the office, you can remove the warranty there. And after you come in, you leave out the requirement, we give you a permit, you've lived for one to three years, depending on the actual, get down your respective use of your soft card, and then we approve, you know you have done it.
I know this is Mr. Baker's department. If I may, Mr. Baker, I know Mr. Moore, his permission for that, you know, of the view, can check out with Mr. Moore?
Yes, I'd like to please to propose one of the laws, you know, it is a kind of a little system. I'm seeing, and just get a lot of, and not a good word, I think it's a good to go.
Go right there.
One more requirement from the regulation we have on, we must have the value of the survivor's life to ensure that. Um, we didn't want to kill any operating on soft cards, so we're not releasing that. Mr. Dern, you have any questions? Mr. Galvin, you have any?
No.
Just information, Mayor Proctor.
I do, and I have that now, and I'm trying to probably see now, on certain times, and I'm only following the question with the layers. And the thought that's a lot about, and I'm thinking for, yeah, for some of our petitions, maybe security and containment and for us. But I also wanna, I'm like, I'm like pretty bored about this. I'm very proud of myself. And I want parents to take this home as a, every, um, just a challenge, a hill to watch in our neighborhood. We want babysitters to know that the babysitter can't let the child sit in the lap and drive. We want the babysitters and every guardian, every baby guardians. So I think Roger, they're doing a great job to the police department, the police system, they're doing a great job. The preliminary format of certifying is getting to the sticker papers, so we appreciate that.
We are naturally, certainly operating, not part of only, only, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Good deal. Mr. Tate. I'm good with, I'll tell you, I hate that services less than that, that a lot, for the young adult population. Good deal. Commissioner Pearson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Ray. I have a question. So Mr. Roger, you mentioned that there's been some concerns. So I want to ask you, because I know some kids have been on soft cards, and I think some kids have been on ATVs or something. Will you tell us what things to ATVs or whatever else, um, possibly you for, Roger, people have been on?
We've been having people on dirt bikes, on pole wheelers, um, from small dirt bikes to bigger dirt bikes. And TV was to operate the pole wheelers, ATVs, dirt bikes, uh, on the roadway. Are some dirt bikes are allowed, or basically go with fun, and the pole wheelers and search is not allowed?
How do they know those that are allowed? You said there are some dirt bikes that are allowed. What would the distinction make there?
They'll have to have return signals, brake lights, horns, when you come from factory.
Let me ask you this question. So are there any, um, rigs, handouts, or pamphlets that citizens could come by City Hall or come by your office and pick up to know the distinction between the dirt bikes, the pole wheelers, and the soft cards?
We have, we, in our brochure, it defines what is allowed on the roadway for the motorized car. Um, it can't go faster than 25 an hour, you know, such as that. But it is on the brochure, we have.
You know, we have some brochures that they come by your office to people.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
That requires no action. Next, Mr. City Manager. Next, the item six, found on page 13, discuss the Southeast Pipe Slip Line project, Mike Hudson.
Uh, we're in Air Commission. Both these properties are north side, all are short system. Uh, one property is 800 meter feet, 36 inch wide, projected cost $268,421.40. The other one is, uh, that one behind the cemetery, pit or pride area. The other one is on the north side of Walker Street, all the way up Highway 221. Um, that is approximately 2100 feet of limited pipe and 24 inch, 307,146.40. Total on both is 575, 5678. It's really budgeted out, and we have 500 mega thousand dollars budget, so we are under budget.
Mr. Moore.
Uh, I'm just talking about this, this is the first time, because the problem was that about 40 years ago, like you said, that we definitely started to think we were aware of the short line running down the back of the outdoors. And then we were fried, and those were, I know, very big, uh, decisions. Just for seven, seven, we had a little bit of, I was still.
Mr. Galvin. Mr. Dern. Mayor, Mayor Proctor. Mr. Tate. Commissioner Pearson.
Uh, just looking for, um, additional bidders. Were there any?
This, this is the contract with Southeast Pipe, certainly, they have the contract, it was type of work through, uh, 421 and H Street, 221. So they think this bid price is off of that contract.
Okay, so it wasn't really.
It was just bid out by that contract, and we got it on a pretty.
Okay, all right.
The next will be, uh, item seven, found on page 38, discuss the first reading of the MGA Formula 5 ordinance, Mike Hudson.
Uh, this is the MGA Formula 5 ordinance, we've done portfolio four and 2014, it runs out December 31st of this year. Uh, this allows MGA to do future purchases on gas, uh, gas and turbine equipment, have it in 72 cities they're in MGA. Every city that can go through this is a member. Uh, Mr. Adams will do the first reading the item ordinance. Uh, we will advertise this two times before the next meeting, we'll have a second meeting the next meeting, this package will be ready to act. Please read the memo of the questions in here, and you can answer all questions, we need no other type of stuff you guys can read. So if you have any questions, just prepare that to ask in the next meeting.
Next item, require an action.
Doesn't require action?
First read.
That's where it comes in, I'm gonna take that for the first read.
And we got a second reading action at the next meeting. Uh, next item is item eight, found on page 67, discuss the 2019 L.A. Street Paying Fee, Mike Hudson.
Uh, this process is planned for this 2019 L.A. project. Uh, this is the street that Mary Commission approved at the end of 2018. Uh, we, we have not changed that list to the same list you guys, you know, approved. Uh, the cost of that project came in at 339, 870, we had one bidder, East Coast Axol, we had two no bids. Uh, budget on this project is 342, 6684, so we came in under budget on this project as well. Uh, so we have you guys tonight to sign the notice of award, and then contract items will follow, and the notice will proceed.
Uh, I just like to help, uh, Mr. Hudson to fill out the, that we are holding on, please.
All right, talking about the little job that I'm doing, we're doing that. All right, we're doing Andrew Street from North Chesapeake to North Alton. Uh, Smith Avenue from Indian, Fitz Street to North Dewey and Smith Street. West Ford Street from Peterson to the end, East Ford from North Dewey Street to North Peterson Avenue. Pine Street from South Madison all the way to McDonald Avenue. South Wheeler from Cherry Street to East Baker. Tilling Street from South Wheeler Avenue to West Magnolia Avenue. West Magnolia Street from South Wheeler to the end. And then what we call our city fund section, uh, Northwood Fisher, Brady Avenue to the end, East Manila. Southwood Fisher from Asher Street to the end. East Rock Street from South Peterson to South Madison, that's a little short strip that some of you guys want to see paid, and the same, it's called a park drive. That's the short strip between the one-way payers of Peterson and Madison.
Okay, thank you for, uh, reading the fact of the record. Um, I only have one question. I know you and I talked, I came by your office today. But what I want to say is prior to us voting on the holidays of 2020 this, I want to make sure we get, get, okay? But I have a question on Pine Street, because it's already called correctly. And I thought, because of all the work that it was gonna take to do on time, it was gonna be in hundreds of dollars.
We, we've completed that work through some slip lines and some point repairs, all that work is completed, ready to be paid.
Slip line and what?
And some point repairs, we actually did up some sewer. Sewer was the biggest problem over there.
And how much were those repairs, across, how much did that come to? Because it's only 75,000 on here.
Well, that's, that's just the street payment that you're showing on there, that's not, that's not your repair. Repair we wound up doing was about $75,000. But like I said, some of that was able to be done with slip line and stepped back from, we were talking about opening up, we laid in that pipe, and we were able to put Southeast coming in and actually slip line there as soon as it was.
Okay, so they made it.
And Mr. Davis, his crew did some of the point repairs as well.
Okay, so we were able to, after they done, uh, less cost than what we thought.
Yes, ma'am, but we were talking about open cut at one time, and we were actually re-cut, lay all the sewer back, and abandoned old line, and we were able, after we did some TV cameras and stuff, to see if we were gonna have to do that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike, can I ask too, that when we do this, as we're doing this, can we please let people know their residences, though, when they might expect ground water and stuff like that in their homes, and you know what I'm saying, you have common use or something, head of time.
Yeah, this was, uh, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna work doing the, here, Kevin, and then, and then posted on Facebook, and on Google, we're all. We're trying to reach out to people, but.
That's what I was.
The bad part about round waters is you never know where it's gonna show up. That's, that's probably, we could work in a neighborhood, it's not comfortable, we could push down water in the country, the system is weak. So it's hard to notify a people who are not working in the country. So it's, this is one of those things, we hate, it's a loop system.
Commissioner Pearson, are you okay with it?
Uh, yes, I'm okay with it, but like I said, I want to get right to the honest.
Okay. Commissioner Tate. Mayor Proctor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Galvin. Mr. Dern.
All right, next item is item nine, found on page 77, uh, discuss amendment number four, number five, uh, to the Premier's Board of Conflict. Uh, as you know, we've been in the building project now for, uh, four, four years. Uh, we done the side work, and we spurred through it there on the eighth project, the, uh, tank of gas and all, other works here, we done the side work. Basically, have completed all the buildings there. Next phase of this project is a tool, and we want to call it Premier's Board of Conflict. We have two contracts there, one kind of for the earthwork, side work, irrigation contract, and we have another one for the, uh, station standings, the solar tree, the buildings there. Uh, after being properly illegally advertised and requested, both as a contract. Uh, bids, uh, the deadline, we're gonna be with any bid at 2:00 p.m. We have, we go to the bids, have the bids, done some bargaining to do, and we have both of these contracts here tonight to move forward, uh, for the Premier's Board of Conflict. Uh, one, one contract is for, uh, $2,498,707. The other was $5,123,270, or grand total, $7,621,907.
Mayor Proctor, you said?
Uh, yes, sir.
Thank you. Tate.
Saying.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yeah, I like saying.
Commissioner, Commissioner Galvin. Commissioner Dern.
Here we have four, we remember talking to matters.
Thank you.
Okay, next will be item 10, found on page 107, discuss the F-521 Douglas Square Access Road Project, number 421, 2020, that was standing Mary.
What page is that, Mr. Baker?
Uh, that was page 107.
Captain Mary, yes.
Good evening.
Uh, sixteen, we had our first six, the bottom, so that's now, in favor of, um, for, uh, for the sixth, uh, over the time. I wrote, um, money, and wash them up. And then the rest, the Mary Commission, uh, it's just not working. And then the rest, the marriage commission, uh, it's just not worth pressing. And these roads, this road, uh, makes, uh, at all, uh, did, uh, George, or Grand Central, uh, award of nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred thousand.
Mayor Proctor.
Yes, sir, and, um, I'm, I'm, I'm discovering trees.
Mr. Tate, say. Commissioner Pierce.
Uh, I'm searching to see, um, if I can find who were some of the other bidders. You know right off, Mrs. Smith?
Excuse me, I didn't.
Who were some of the other bidders for this project?
Uh, there were, I had one every year, then I had a bidder from Rockwood Construction, uh, it's burned, burned Georgia. And then, uh, un grand estimate.
And I'm, I, I apologize. I'm looking for, but I just don't see those other bids, but for their tax, and you saw which page are they on?
Uh, the actual bid was on, I was probably, I can give you the, uh, state number that you would like.
What did you say, what page did you say, George?
That was, that was the bid for the negotiations. So then we can, when the negotiations process actually stood for us, we slipped, it went better. And, uh, then first, uh, uh, during the negotiations with a little better, we come up with this figure.
Okay, I'm not confident, so, uh, take the four.
You care for four?
Yeah.
Now, Ms. Moore. Mr. Gallow.
You seen it?
Mr. Durham. Sure. Okay, we're gonna take that for four. That was not the matters. Next.
Okay, uh, item eleven, found on page one twenty-eight, is contingent upon item ten being approved. Uh, this is the developer agreement for road project, cards, tax, location district, uh, as stated in item ten, you know, you'll bid out, uh, a little bit of guy that we negotiated some, uh, trials and things. So in item number eleven, uh, in the developer agreement, uh, have we gone through this whole eighteen-month process, you know, as cities and counties and schools, we're all going, our parks and different places and this. And so this is the road agreement that we have to approve in order to build the road or the tax allocation district that brings the chicken lay and the hobby lobby and all that. So, uh, item eleven cannot be done until item ten is done.
Okay, so you just, you're gonna take that for four, yes? Okay, good deal. Next.
Okay, uh, item twelve, found on page one thirty-five, discuss the council rule of procedures and orders resolution very common.
So basically, y'all, we wanted to bring some type of, uh, some guidelines, the upper structure, I mean, and basically mirrors what we were already doing. Uh, Commissioner Pierce, uh, had, uh, some legal advice, uh, to take a look at. And, uh, basically, uh, there are three items, I believe, that we, uh, got, uh, that I suppose that we're gonna adopt. The one is new business, moving, uh, the deadline from minis to the Friday. And then they gave us a choice, uh, whether to do some technical risks, uh, whether to hold, uh, the, uh, three penny. Citizens on the work session will hold it now or to hold it during the break of the week. But I, I feel as though we should keep aware of this, but those are the only three things that were different based on the, uh, legal response for Commissioner Pierce. Uh, let's start over. Now, let's talk over Commissioner Pierce, since, uh, you had some legal advice, Commissioner Pierce.
Uh, first of all, Mr. Mary, I'd like to ask, have you all had a chance to read the email that Attorney Quer sent today? Where it says, hello, Mayor Paul, one city official, Mr. Davis, and thank you for incorporating most, most of the current changes into the vice of city council, who, uh, too, on which the city council will be open tonight's meeting. All right, regarding what may have just been oversight in the section titled Rules of Debate subsection L I I. That outlines a procedure for voting for a motion to call the question. See pages one sixty-four, sixty, one forty-seven of the attacks agenda for tonight's work session and council meeting. As urged, the revised rules now state that a two-third majority vote is required for a motion to call the question to pass. However, apparent therefore explanation of this says, example, at least four affirmative votes out of seven total votes. As four of seven is less than a two-third majority. So she states this should be changed to five affirmative votes out of the seven total votes. So, cause you all have a chance to see that, you gotta send it to us today.
I didn't see that email, but.
Charlie, have you saw it?
I haven't. But any of the options.
Yeah, it did. Has anybody seen it? You're on the message. Did you get it to you too?
No, I don't know.
I'm, we were here a while.
So basically, uh, the call for questions is not something that we, we use. I, I don't think we've done it since I've been back this time. So, uh, I propose that we move forward the way that it is now. Uh, we went in our, Mr. Uh, City, yes, uh, we went in our bottom, yes, okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions, Commissioner?
Uh, no, I just like to say that if you all move forward with it, I just, uh, object based on the conditions that she has made.
Okay, good deal. So we have to carry that forward. Uh, Mr. Tate.
Mayor, what she read that, it's true that where you, it says two-thirds majority and that is five.
Right.
The older one has four, seven, so it, it doesn't mean say five. If it say five, yes, it says five.
No, it says four.
Yeah, it says it's two-thirds, which is five, but the number actually shows four.
Okay, good deal. So we're good now, Commissioner?
So we're, we're good. We're incorporating per change.
Yeah, five.
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 So you're good with consent or carry it forward?
Uh, as far as I know, I think I'm okay with it. If I see that I'm, there's something else that I'm concerned about, I'll bring it back.
Okay.
But as long as we go with five, yeah, I go with, uh, the same.
Mr. Tate, say. Mayor Proctor. Mr. Moore. Good. Just move forward. We need to, uh, sort of pick up the pace here.
What's the next thing? Uh, next is item thirteen, found on page one fifty, discuss the Roscoe Allen and Police Department warrant, Chief Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Mr. Davis. Yes, I, I have first, uh, question for Chief. Is the Chief here tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Chief, can you come to the podium, please? So, uh, Chief Johnson, will you please tell me what are police procedures when taken out of court?
If there's probable cause of this, the officer applies for the one through match report. And if the match report judge determines there's enough probable cause, make an arrest and they should.
So, in the instance of Mr. Allen, how was the warrant so tiny? On the probable cause?
The officer applied for the one from match report judge and the judge found there was probable cause of issues.
Okay, so when did the officer apply for the one?
Uh, I'm not sure. The day of Mr. Allen's arrest, I guess.
So then, you would say that after hours, cause like I've said numerous times, I was on the phone with Mr. Allen, uh, during the time that the incident occurred on the block. And it was almost eight o'clock P.M., so he was able to get that warrant, uh, that later that.
I'm not sure.
Have you spoken with the officer, Chief?
Uh, I spoke to him briefly this morning.
And what did that system concern you on?
I didn't discuss it.
Well, that's what I was asking you. If you spoke with him, I'm concerned that.
No, ma'am.
Okay, so then, if an officer does not actually see a crime take place, isn't there supposed to be some type of hearing that's done to establish if that warrant is valid?
If they want to have a probable cause hearing after the issue, then they, they do that. But, uh, I believe this incident, I really don't wanna get into particular of the incident, but there was probable cause to apply for the warrant and the warrant issue.
Okay, so then, are you saying to me, because I was on the phone with Mr. Allen at the time, and Mr. Preston and Mayor Paul both stated, and I'm not gonna sit here and say what they stated, it's on the warrant, that Mr. Allen said, I'll f you up and I'll put you past, okay? Now, should not, tell me if I'm wrong, but shouldn't that officer, since he was not there to witness what happened, should he, should, should he have resorted to some type of definitive information before taking that warrant or either?
I can't, I can't stand here and try this case and.
I'm not asking for the facts. I'm asking for officer procedure, sir.
He called for secret. He took a report, he found the probable cause, he applied for the warrant, the warrant was issued in Mr. Allen's arrest.
Probable cause based upon what?
Well, there's his best warning and I don't wanna get into particular of the case.
Who's best, who's best?
Huh?
Who's best, who's?
There's video of that scene.
That's right, and it does not say, I'll f you up or put you, it doesn't say that.
And I'm not gonna get into particular of the case. That is something Mr. Allen's heard.
I, I understand. I'm concerned about our officer doing due diligence to issue a just warrant, not based on just what the mayor said, who has a restraining order and does not like Mr. Allen, and neither on what his side kid, Robert Preston, said, who doesn't like him, cause he likes whoever Tony likes. So, this officer took that warrant, Chief, based on, if there were seven people, forty, fifty people out there, why didn't he talk to somebody else? That's, that's something you should know as a chief. You should have had this conversation with your officer. I'm through with you. I'm, I'm done with you, Chief. You didn't, you didn't, you didn't answer what I, he answered, but. Let me ask you, before you take a seat, can I ask you, ask you this question? What is the OCGA statute of false swearing? If a person knowingly gives a false statement to a law enforcement officer, what is the punishment? And what is it in type?
I have to read it. I'm not sure.
How long you been, uh, in law enforcement?
Ma'am, I don't have the entire OCGA memorandum.
Is it, is it, is it OCGA sixteen, that's ten, that's seven, one? To your, to your room? Well, that's it. Never read it. Sixteen, that's ten, that's seven, one. False swearing. A, a person to whom a lawful oath of or affirmation has been administered or who executes a document knowing that it purports to be an acknowledgement of a lawful oath or affirmation commits the offense of false swearing when in any matter or thing other than a judicial proceeding, he knowingly and willfully makes a false statement. Now, if there was a problem about Mr. Allen, Mr. Allen being on Gassin Avenue, that's one thing. But for two people to go to law enforcement, call law enforcement and say they heard a person say this, that, and the other when they did not, that is false swearing. A person convicted of offense of false swearing shall be punished by a fine of not more than a thousand dollars or by imprisonment for not less than one, no more than five years of holding. Does that bring that back to your murders now?
I think I've, I've read it before, but I'm not.
Thank you, Chief. It's, it, I'm, I'm gonna close this. It says that citizens of Douglas have to feel that they can't get a fair shake with things that go on because who a person might be, or whom a person might be. But you told me in the email when I was questioning you about that warrant. You told me you would make sure that things were done fairly. Those are words you said in the email.
And witnesses have been talked to as of today, Mr. Parker, witnesses.
Okay. And witnesses should have been talked to prior to that warrant being issued. Thank you.
Hang on, Chief.
Go ahead. Chief, I just wanna make sure. I saw, you know, you sent us a copy of the incident report about this, uh, incident that occurred. My understanding is Mr. Allen was observed by several witnesses down there, and you got testimony, I think, or, uh, another witness besides the two that have been mentioned, stated that Mr. Allen said things, and he was out there directing at the mayor, correct? And so my understanding is the mayor has a temporary protective order that from the report that's been issued by Superior Court judge that Roscoe Allen knows not to be within five hundred yards of the mayor, correct? That provided probable cause for your officer to get a warrant for arrest, Mr. Allen, correct?
Yes, sir. He didn't have to say, he didn't have, he can say Mary Christmas, that was my fault. Probably wanted to do it well.
Okay, I just wanna make sure. Take me.
I'm not done. We're not discussing probable cause, but we're discussing the false swearing, and two people telling lies to law enforcement. Let me be clear, that that's why I'm bringing this up. So, Mr. Public Defender, Gallow, Attorney, whatever, get your information straight. You listen to the tape. You, you, you can hear, and what they said, that Mr. Allen said, were, was a lie. They said out loud. That's what I mentioned to you. Now, whether or not Mr. Allen should have been on Gassin Avenue, whether or not traveling on Gassin going to his aunt's house or wherever he was going, no, not knowing whether or not the mayor was up there. So I guess he should have backed up traffic and held the traffic or whatever needs to be done to try to, once he saw the mayor turn around. Come on, that's a public street. That's a public street. Okay, my point is whether or not the officer did his due diligence and get that warrant.
With that.
Thank you.
It is six point. We will do everything we can to hear as many of the citizens as we can. Uh, who's the first one? We have six. We have a file beyond, you heard of that. First one is, is Aisha Coley. Is that your name, your address, your director? I'm sorry. Yeah, I found it. We said this is the three minutes we have, never too long.
Um, I took one person, it's called, it's called, it's called senior, so, um, I would request that we extend it, um, based on how I took some of that issue.
Okay, uh, it's still here at the file.
Thank you.
Okay, now, the young lady, the young lady that you're.
Uh, Taisha here.
You can move the seal. Okay, thank you. Ms. Cole.
My name is Aisha Coley. Uh, my address is nine hundred four Dewey Avenue. It's time. This is bigger than the block. This is bigger than black and white. This is about fairness and equality. The media is the first line to molding the narrative of a situation. So it currently active American community when a false narrative was presented to W F X L and W A L D. It was stated that the block has been recently known as a hub of criminal activity. However, doing my research to fact check, this is far from the truth. Going to the Coffee County Police scanner, it shows that no arrests have been recently made in the nine hundred block of Gassin Avenue in quite some time. But many arrests have been made in other interesting areas of the city of Douglas. The visual representation shows that these red dots depict citizens who have been arrested for possession of methamphetamine and gang violence. It wasn't on the block, okay? What we've come to realize is, these individuals will get sentenced to drug court. And the people with the blunt or possession of marijuana less than an ounce, as you said, the blunt that was in their mouth, those people were more than likely go to prison. It appears that these red areas need the police's hands on approach more than anything. So when we talk about fairness and equality, we wanna make sure that the increased policing is not just taking place on the block. But let's not call it the block. Let's call it what it's called, what it is. And that's the George Washington Harbor Shopping Center. So when we call it the block that we made that they hold for criminal activity, the facts have to justify the increased policing. We're not above the law. No one is above the law. Crime has no culture. Crime has no location. But we can see here the facts and based upon the research that's put on the Coffee County Police scanner, that this men, but take a look at those red dots, don't everybody get a good visibility of what's going on? Because that's not a negative city, it's a. Because that's not a negative city of Douglas. That's not a negative Coffee County. That's a lot of increased policing that needs to be in those areas. I think the areas that are now disabled with green acres, Tinko Road, Wonder Watcher Road, Brooks Avenue. It's all over the city of Douglas. It's all over Coffee County. But when you draw media attention to one area, how can we sit here and say that that's fair? It's not fair. It's not right. It's hurtful. But did you know that four to six positive activities took... There is no need. You also stated, Mayor, that the ATBs, illegal activity, underage drinking, drugs, and paintings is very, very negative picture. But what, what I want to say is that unauthorized vehicles on a public roadway is a technical offense. Open container is a technical offense. When you talk about possession of marijuana less than an ounce, it's a technical offense. But my God, possession of methamphetamine is a felony. It's causing a, it's, it's a big, it's causing, it's eating away at the community. So what is being done in other areas? Are they too getting this, this increased presence from the police? One thing that we do realize when the mayor talks best and we've talked, we've talked several times, he said he didn't call the WFXL. He said that he didn't call, but we found out that, I'm seeing on Mr. Moore, uh, Jason, that a city worker emailed the article, and she had to get that order from someone.
May I ask why the next person coming up, he said a city worker, uh?
Yes, Mr. Moore.
He emailed it?
She emailed the press release.
Do you know that city worker's name?
It's Blundell Thomas.
I, I have. Mr. Harrison? I can have. You know, you know about it, Mr. Jackson?
It's standard for all calls, any press releases that we send out goes to, uh, a variety of news sources. Um, so that is what Ms. Thomas is doing. She's the public information officer. She sends them out, and it just depends on what she, whose agency picks up on the article.
So where would she, where would she have gotten that information about the George Washington Harbor Shopping Center or the block to say that the city of Douglas is cracking down on illegal crime, illegal, uh, gambling, illegal whatever, all that and say? Where would she have gotten that order from? Because that went out when this council did not even know that it was going to a public meeting. So where did Ms. Blundell get, get, who wrote that up? Did she go up with?
No, that's our, what we crafted, uh, at request of the city manager. Um, we send those out, and anytime we try to get information to the...
At request of the city manager.
Anytime we try to get information out.
And so, Mr. Mr. City Manager, you didn't have the respect to letting everybody in this council know that you were sending out something like that that was targeting the black community. That was putting at the black community. Because you didn't mention anything about none of these other places. She talking about all this meth going on there. Why didn't you seem to have her sending out and just the first of the black community? These your fucking race and I don't blame you. We are tired of you all making us look like we this and we that. So why would you do that, Mr. City Manager?
You read the press release, ma'am. It said that there's no mention of any, any one specific area.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
You'll read the press release, there's nothing, because most items on here don't have anything to do with the block.
So why was there a picture of the block then?
That's, that's Fox News and...
No, no, no. You should have got enough of it.
It talks about ATBs, they print out.
ATBs?
Green, green.
It's unselfish, Mr. City Manager. It's, uh, it should have been pictures of other places then.
It wasn't a picture. I'd like to hear again.
It's gonna be a time, right?
You'll read it.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Now, I'm trying to be as lenient as possible. One person talking at a time, please. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah. Once again, I tell you, all we send is press releases. What the media does, puts pictures on that has nothing to do with the city of Douglas or any other cities. All we do is use the city logos and we send a press release. There is no mention of any neighborhoods, any streets. The only thing we spoke of was activity. We talk about the illegal drugs, like Ms. Coley brought up a while ago about the meth. That's one of the things on our target list. We talk about illegal gambling. There are established gambling houses in the city of Douglas that were gonna come down. Y'all have taken it and turned it into about the block. We have not spoken about the block. Now, are there some activities down there going on? The illegal fighting that was going on? Sure. But it's also in other parts of our community.
Are you referring to the box?
Yeah, we're talking about, yeah, the, the, where people get, get in the risk of puking and there's gambling.
But two people, like, they still consider a prank, which is also a ticketable offense.
That's disorderly conduct and it's technical, yes. I mean, that's, yeah, that's correct.
We can, we can use the, the, you know, the certain terminology, and that's perfectly fine. But in the press release, in the press release that you all issued, I don't just say it's the difference between the news article and the news media and the press release that you all got, that came out. But that press release then made up, made Ms. Blundell Thomas, E. R. Two, WFXL, the WALB, she interviewed the mayor, so he had to, she didn't make up the law. She didn't make up South Gassen. She didn't make up the hub of illegal activity, which are most intangible offenses. She didn't, she, Mr. Moore didn't make this up?
Here again, city staff has nothing to say about specific areas, but we're not going to talk about specific areas or specific parts of town. Just like the, just like the underage drinking. If people, and much people, they control Facebook, and they got nothing better to do with their time nowadays. If you look at some of the videos, there's some establishments in here in town where people are working on the counters and checking every, you know, watch everywhere, and underage drinking, that's what we're at. So we haven't said nothing about underage drinking down that far off the area, so.
Well, I just think that this, this, WFXL, the WALB, the mayor, the, uh, city manager, the chief of police, should have all had a joint effort to make sure that that represented all areas.
And that's what we did. We all went together. We all went together.
So, so what about the letters to the black citizens of George Washington?
Here again, another, another, this, uh, understanding from somebody I heard that created that. It wasn't literally ever sent to the business owner.
Come on, now. I saw the letter, and it had Chief Shane Ellison's name on it.
Listen, if we had, we had Patrick West go visit the property owners of what you're referring to as George Washington Harbor Center. To add, as a form, we have on any private event, on any private property, if they want us to patrol those properties, they have to give us permission. And so, we asked then, do they want us to patrol the parking lots? And so there was a form that Patrick West went to visit with the property owners, but he's our community relations officer. So he went out and vetted those property owners, and some signed and some did not sign. Uh, but here again, we can't go on private property patrolling. One time we go on private property, we've been called by nine one one, and we have probable cause of legal, uh, uh, legal issues throughout the property. So these properties where it's private ownership, we asked those property owners if they want us to patrol, and they signed the form and we start controlling. They don't want us to, uh, patrol, we don't patrol.
That got done with every, every business in the city of Douglas, who was having, like you said, an event. But this was done prior to the block party, it was done prior to the event. So every privately owned business gets this form from Mr. West, and he goes to business personally to, to deliver that form and ask.
In the area that becomes, uh, I call, or...
Yes or no? Yes or no? Yes or no? Did any other areas get the letter?
But there is no letter. There's a...
The form. Did any other, did any other get it?
Give me a look, business that signed it.
Name some.
Shane, I don't have a name for it.
Oh, okay. I can, I can. I saw it. I saw it. Some of the owners. I saw some of the owners of, of, of the George Washington Harbor Shopping Center, sir.
The what?
I saw some of the black business owners of the George Washington Harbor Shopping Center, and they received that in the mail. Not, no, Mr. West, I didn't bother to talk to them. They were sent that in the mail wanting permission to tell y'all to take, remove people from their property. I've talked to them.
By knowledge, Patrick West has not sent a letter. Uh, now, it's also at the same time, Community Development has sent some letters out trying to establish some meetings to work with some, uh...
I know about that. That's having meetings. This is removing people from private properties, asking the business owners to give them permission. I read the letter. I saw it. And it's got Chief's name. I talked to him. Might have more names, but it's got Chief there. And again, this now should have been made aware of what was going on with these businesses.
But again, y'all are trying to use your position as mayor, as chief of police, as city manager to, uh, if, if you're talking about a financial, it has to be about a financial interest of the George Washington Harbor Shopping Center. It has to be about some kind of regulatory control, and you're only asking about this particular area, especially after people have requested to purchase that, those businesses, and then all of a sudden, things, when these people don't want to sell to you, then it becomes these press releases. It becomes a negative media attention, but that's what it appears. Couldn't it be that? Because that's what appears to these citizens.
So, excuse me, uh, we're at six fifty five.
I'm sorry to stop by y'all's time.
So, uh, basically, everyone else, they look up to the next meeting. Y'all have to fill out another form. Uh, let me speak to this right here for about two minutes. Uh, basically, I just all got started. Because, ma'am, I saw the, uh, noise ordinance waiting, uh, for the, uh, George Washington Harbor Center. And the thing was, did the city have the authority to tell someone that they could do something on a piece of property that that person did not own? That was it. There was nothing more to it. That's just like me, uh, I live at two forty-two Miller Road. Mr. J. White just cannot come to my property and get a loud, uh, uh, noise ordinance. He can't do that. That's my property. He doesn't own that property. So I was explaining to the city manager, I don't know if the city assumes some liability, because you, as the city, gave somebody permission to go to have, uh, the ordinance on somebody else's property.
So, what are you referring to? What do they have to say?
I'm saying, I'm saying...
Where are you saying they have?
Uh, June team, uh, the party on the eighteenth.
Okay, well, let's say June.
Hold on, just a second.
June.
No, I'm saying this right here. June team, did you ask any other?
Yes.
Mr. Jonathan Williams was a part of the team. Right, but the other owner, did you ask? Yes, I did, Mr. Gray, right here. So, any signs? And, and that's what I'm saying. Just want to make sure that the property owners are with. That's all that looked.
But, 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 where? Can we ask Mr. Tate, that's my, oh, did you lie to me? But he, but we didn't see any, the mayor, uh, the mayor was there when we talked about it. Mr. Doran was there. You were, you were thinking it was unable to be there. But, Mr. Tate, but were, were you aware that, that we were discussing this, this, with all? What are, what are your thoughts regarding these issues being that you know about the George Washington Harbor Shopping Center?
Let me see. I, since this have came up.
Yes, sir.
I have talked to each owner that owns property up there. And about the, whether or not, is it okay for the young people to hang out there? Talk with four or five owners that own property up there. They don't have any problem with that, for they hanging out there, you know? Now, if they don't have any problem, me as an individual, I do not have a problem with them hanging out there. Longers, they stay with the inbound of the law. Now, if they break the law, then...
We got to cut it off. I went, I went six fifty five.
But the owners don't have nothing to say, because we asked y'all senior officials when they approached George Washington Harbor, what was anybody doing? The, the mark that they gave us was the city mayor sent us over here to clear the block. Not the owners. They said the city mayor, and they did that like three times. Because I personally asked them.
Okay.
And they were going to be the city mayor, so it's a...
I said twice. I don't know about the...
But why?
Okay, okay, hold up. Hold up for a second. It is seven o'clock. It is seven o'clock. I said we was gonna cut it off at six fifty five.
You just got to stop it, Mr. Mayor. You, you outbound. You're bound. You're over, you're over deserting your authority. And this make this council aware of what you're planning to do, so we can let the people know.
It is seven o'clock. It is seven o'clock. It is time for us to convene the city, uh, committee, okay? Now, that was the two word sentence, and we're gonna go directly.
So what about, what about us on the agenda? What about us on the agenda?
Move to the next one. At this time, we're going to, uh...
So you break, so you break your own rules. You said three minutes. Everybody gonna have an opportunity to speak. I don't have nothing to do with who's here, not my own.
I understand that, Mr. Parker. You're gonna be moved to the next agenda.
He said, they'll put y'all...
At this time, that the food, that concludes the word sentence. At this time, we're gonna go directly into, uh, the city of Douglas American Mission Meeting.